There's Terry, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order. And I can ask the clerk to call who's present.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi, present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Okay, looks like we're here. Now I'll remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. The consent agenda reads Town Accountant Warden's January 21st, 2021.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Ms. Hotchkiss. Mute.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
And myself, Ms. Bates, hi.
Okay, and that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Town managers' report.
Hi, again, good evening, everyone. I do have the printed report that you have in the packet. I will just touch on a couple of highlights, and then I'll have a few other things to add in that are more late-breaking. The vaccine clinic that we had for first responders and other Phase 1A employees was, I think, an overwhelming success. And for two reasons: one, we got everybody vaccinated for the first dose, and the second is we learned a lot about how to administer the clinic, and I think we figured out some ways where we could pick up some efficiencies. And if the federal and state governments decide to distribute vaccine doses to the municipalities for distribution, I know that we are in a position where we can, in fact, do that. The refinements to the process and the facility are continuing, but, like I said, it's not up to us when we get the doses, but once we get them, we're ready to roll out additional vaccinations. Any questions on that before I move forward?
Terry.
All right, I was on mute. I am so proud of the town for being this first responder site. Thank you so much to everybody. And I just read an hour ago that 75 and older is going to start next week, and Phase 2 is going to get going. I know you don't have any idea yet if you're going to get any vaccines or what. I guess there's two groups of people that would need to be notified. One is the people who are eligible, and one is there's a lot of volunteers who want to help, which you may or may not need, like people helping register people or traffic or I don't know what. So my question is, if we can do the general public, are you going to notify people by code RED and news and notices? Or is there any plan how you notify people for registering?
Yeah, part of our emergency operations center, which is our smaller, it's the smaller group that is just managing some COVID response issues, includes Erin Stevens, who's our communications officer. And so we are working on a communications plan for that. A code-Red call would certainly be made, and it would be supplemented with websites, social media posts, and things like that. I haven't heard from Susan today. One of the things we're working out is, I think many of the vaccine clinics, especially when we get the general population, there's a system for signing up for it that automates the insurance reimbursement to the town for the cost of doing the vaccination. So that's something we're working on. And so while I can greatly respect people's desire to help out and pitch in in this really, you know, hugely important effort, a lot of the roles are very specialized. And so, you know, I think we don't want more volunteers than we can use, and so we're being somewhat selective because they have to have, you know, obviously for vaccinators, we want healthcare professionals or former healthcare professionals. And then the other stuff, the software and things like that are pretty technical. So I'm not sure we'll need a lot of volunteers, but we certainly appreciate the call, and if we do, we know we can find many good ones.
Even for traffic control, whatever you need, we've got people here. Thanks a lot.
Yep. And so, like I said, I haven't heard when that's going to, I know they said it's going to start, but they have to have doses. And I think over the weekend, I'm sure all of you saw the same news I did, and talked about concerns about supply. You know, the big thing is, we're going to need another 420 doses for the second round for our first responders that have only been vaccinated one time. And so it's not just the first dose, it's both, and having enough supply to do both within the 28-day window that they have to happen. So I, like I said, this is not a Concord problem, this is a national and, I think, in some ways international problem. All I can tell you is, the system that we have built for our vaccination station works really well, and will serve this community really well when we have our opportunity. And that's the part we can control, and I think it's gone well. So whether or not we do the next phases as a region, I'm still not sure. We're still having those discussions. Again, a lot of things are just very uncertain, and we need guidance from state and federal government. So I just had a quick note here about a project that's, that was approved for a wastewater capacity 13B Commonwealth Ave, relatively small amount of sewerage contribution that the Public Works, the Public Works Commission approved. It's a West Concord project. I believe it's a parking lot now, and they're proposing a two-story mixed-use building. I know it's been before the planning board a couple of times, and it looks like a very interesting project. The developers have been listening to town staff recommendations, and so I think more to come on that as it goes through the permitting process. And then another issue that was raised to the Public Works Commission that I think is something of town-wide concern is there are a number of private streets in Concord. And while the town does not maintain, meaning maintain the condition of the asphalt for those private streets, we did, the town agreed many years ago to do snow and ice operations on those streets, and many of them are degrading to the point where it will make it difficult to do snow and ice operations. And so that's an issue that CPW has raised with the Public Works Commission. So the people who are responsible for the improvements on those private ways will take that, you know, take that message and hopefully make those improvements so we don't have equipment failures or injuries for Public Works employees on roads that are really, maybe getting unsafe to plow. And then just a couple of quick items from DPLM. There was a notice of intent for Bedford Road, and so they, and another one for 296 Bedford Road, and so those have been continued. And then the fun one is the Route 2 Wildlife Underpass. That is a part of the, I thought this was part of the Bruce Springsteen retro, but they are working on a, like I said, an underpass under Route 2 for wildlife, and Marcia did us the favor of including a, I believe that's a bobcat.
Yep.
So that's kind of a neat, a neat little project that I think people would find very interesting that doesn't usually make it to, you know, the front page. One of the things that should be on, at least near the front page, is the NMI StarMet Reuse Planning Committee is, they've been going to different committees and presenting kind of a preliminary view of their draft report. I know they're looking to get a lot of feedback. You know, it's going to be a number of years before things start to get built there, but they really want to get a lot of community input on the master plan because the master plan does impact the cleanup strategy for the EPA and, by extension, the contractor. And so the master plan, even though it feels far away, it's important to really nail down that master plan. And I say nail it down, it's important that we know generally where things are going to go so they can complete the cleanup. If you're not familiar with brownfields work, how you're going to reuse a site often drives how you approach remediation, and so that's why this information is important now, even if, like I said, construction wouldn't start for a number of years. And then the Community Preservation Act, sorry, the Community Preservation Committee approved a number of applications, like the list is on the reports. And then, as you can see, the police department still is integrating hybrid interceptors into the fleet, which is helpful in achieving some of our sustainability goals. Right now, there's not an all-electric interceptor that we're aware of that is ready for the type of use that we, that are, that many municipal police departments use it for. So the hybrid is a good bridge to that. And we're very disappointed to report that Kevin Gina, who was our school resource officer, resigned to move to a position in the Lynn Police Department. Happy for Kevin, but he was really, he was really great with the students at the high school, and so we're, that's a, we will miss him. And then I did include in my town manager's report the guidelines, information that we gave to the finance committee. We can certainly talk about that as we develop the budget, just to show you where the finance committee's guidelines are. It's, you know, in talking to Kerry LaFleur, we think it's a good starting point for the town manager's budget to be prepared. I, a lot, it was a good discussion, I thought, if you, I know Linda, you were there, but I think, I thought we had a good discussion with the finance committee, and like I said, I think we're, our mission for the town manager's budget is pretty clear. And then I did include the notice about, they didn't indict a gentleman who robbed the Citizens Bank on Lowell Road, and that's something that was, people remember, that was over the summer, it was quite a day, helicopter and the whole thing, and so they did catch him, and there was indictment issues, they had those statements. And then the last two things, there's a couple of quick hitters, and then I want to talk briefly about the town government survey. Robin, Robin Demas from the library, her last day is Friday. She's been with us for 35 years, and so she's retiring. And we wish Robin a happy retirement, and thank her for her long commitment to the Concord Free Public Library. And I mentioned the VPN issues, and, yeah, that's it. So then I just want to talk briefly about the town government's survey report. And if you had a chance to look at it, one of the things, so in going through this, if, for those at home, there's a, it goes back to 2008, and it's two-year intervals, and it asks many of the same questions. We did add some different questions this year to get information about COVID response and kind of how things have happened during the pandemic. And in going through it, there's, I don't know if it, I think they, I think about 1,500 people took the survey, not all of them responded to every question, so the survey level, the numbers change as you go through each question. And I don't know if it's the same people every year, but in many years, the numbers don't change dramatically. But there were a couple of things that I took to be really exceptionally good news, and really, as someone who's, you know, still relatively new, but some of this may reflect some of the work that we've put in as a team. You know, the overall satisfaction went up four percentage points, which I thought was nice. You know, some of the other ones, but I think the one I really want to focus on, because this is something that comes up, I think, a lot as we talk about issues and communication with the community. I'm just scrolling to get to it. You know, the, how information has been received, the community's view on that was, I think, noticeably improved over prior years. And the website and social media, in terms of preferred or most convenient way to find out about services, news, and events, both of those doubled in two years. So the website went from 28 to 55%, and so that's slightly under-doubling. And then the social media went from 4 to 8%. And obviously, I've already mentioned Erin Stevens, she's a great part of that, but I think Jeremy and Chris also do a lot, and Kari, there's a lot of people who make sure our website has the right content for people and that it's accessible. And so I, they deserve a lot of credit for the growth and the use of the website. And I think if you, if you have it, if you look at the website, I know that sometimes the conventional wisdom is older people have a hard time with it, and there are some that do, and I think that's why we need to continue to do the traditional methods of communication. But with people 65 and older, 47% preferred the website as a means of getting information. 55 to 64, it was 63%. So I'm pleased that it is having a broad reach, and that reach is growing because it's important. It is the, it is the most efficient and most current way to get, to make sure that people can get access to information. So I took that, I took that to be all, like I said, really good news, and, you know, I think a good sign that we're moving in the right direction on how we make information available to the public. And I thought that the, the response on towns, you know, information about COVID, and then the towns' effort to continue our services were both, we received very favorable feedback about the services during the pandemic. And so I just want to thank the community and the community members who filled that out, and as I've said many times, we've been building the airplane on the fly, and based on some of these results, it appears that it's still in the air, and that's a good thing. And so I thank, I thank the community for their feedback, and it really was really affirming to me and the other members of the team to know that it's making a difference. So, and that's it for me.
All right. Any other questions for the town manager? Matt?
Yeah, of course, the kind of the late-breaking one is about the, the meeting later on this evening.
Oh, geez, thank you.
And so, you know, how is that?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Being organized.
Yeah, sorry, Matt. I, so that's one, and I didn't know if Linda was going to talk about it. So, and I want to start off by saying that I'm sorry that this has been so late-breaking. I think as we tried to articulate last week, the information about not having legislative fix was late at the, the week before last, and we've really been scrambling, trying to figure out a way to do this and get the information out, and figure out what the rules are, and, and so late, and so last week, we were able to get an FM transponder that was tested on Friday morning. And so we know that if people, people can come and stay in their cars, there's, it is at Harvey Wheeler, there is limited parking, so we can't have, you know, 400 cars show up, but we can certainly accommodate a quorum for the caucus, and people can stay in their cars. And I know Kari is working on information to give out there about how people will do nominate. People may need to get out of their car to walk up to nominate someone, but I know Kari's working on a voting system, and, and I think Erin is trying to, maybe sending out news and notices to get the information out that people can stay in their cars. I did reach out to the League Women Voters to make sure they knew what was happening so they could reach out to their membership as well. I wish I could say that, you know, we were on top of this one, but this one was rolling along so fast that we really scrambled to pull it together. And so I apologize that we didn't have better information out, but we'll be able to pull it off, and we can accommodate the quorum and not violate the gathering rule, so that's good.
Jane?
I was just going to offer, Stephen, I don't know whether, thank you for reaching out through the League. I was also imagining that maybe the Council on Aging or some of the other town offices could specifically reach out to those who would be better off staying warm in their car if they want to attend. And just to remind everybody, is, I remembered quorum to be 25, is that correct? Okay, so, and that, would that 25 also include the second, the nominators and secanders? Yeah, okay, so it's.
It's at 7:00 PM, yeah.
7:00 PM.
Yep.
Tonight.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, at the Harvey Wheeler parking lot, and I believe that when you pull in, you'll be facing 55 Church Street, and there'll be a setup that you'll see for people. And like I said, we want to get at least 25, but if people are familiar with that lot, there, there's not unlimited parking there, so we want to make sure that we get anyone who wants to come, but that we're not overwhelmed, although I do think the signal extends beyond the parking lot, but we wouldn't be able to see you. So.
Is eyesight required to be counted?
I'm not sure about that, that's a Kari question, and I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Okay. Yep.
And again, I, like I said, this is one, I've never been a part of anything like this that has, that has had to come together like on the fly, and I've been a part of anything.
Nor have we, nor have we, nor have anyone, yeah.
Yeah. So this is something that I think will be kind of fun if we, you know, if everyone keeps their heads and stays patient with us, it'll be a little bit like a drive-in caucus, and we will fulfill our obligation under the town meeting vote and live to tell the tale.
So are we confident that a quorum will show up? I guess, you know, there's these two limits, right? We need to at least get a quorum, and we don't want a massive number beyond a quorum. I don't know if either of those is at risk, but I just, it would be a shame not to get a quorum.
Yeah, I think we'll be good. Like I said, I think, like I said, I think the League has been sending out, I've been giving the League information, I know Kari's been working with her contacts at the League as well, and so they, you know, there's, I think if just a small number of League Women Voters came, you'd have your 25. But I also think there are other people who are interested in wanting to do it. Some people just may get a kick out of the drive-in-style town caucus.
Yeah, and then people just need to be aware that if the parking lot's full, that they just go get it waved away, you know?
I don't know how we're going to handle that, Matt, to be honest with you. Again, this is something that we are, we'll be figuring out real time, so all we're going to do is appeal for patience, and we'll see how it goes, and I'll be there. I don't, I know it's not normally a town manager thing to attend the town caucus, but just for logistical support, I fear I will be a fly on the wall there.
Will the signal make it down to the commuter rail parking lot?
No.
Okay.
No, they did test, they did test the range, and mostly because of topography.
Yeah, sure.
It doesn't work there, but really, and I want to, I want to really commend, again, Erin and Kate Hodges and Kari Tari for really pulling this thing together on the fly. It turns out the FM transponder was not all that expensive, and so we actually purchased it, so if we need to do more of these between now and the time everybody's vaccinated, we can.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions for the town manager?
I did have one other comment that, just about the town survey, and I thought that it was interesting to see, in addition to the other remarks that Stephen made, which I concur about, about the town's response to COVID and the reliance, increasing reliance on direct communication from the town as opposed to through publications, that the popularity of Zoom as a medium for holding meetings, I think that really stuck out for me. And again, I don't know, you know, when the emergency ends, I'm just curious how this kind of new medium may stick with us or not, so.
Interesting, can I take a minute on that, Linda? It's an interesting question, actually, Chris Carmody's here, he's, as you all know, he's been kind of our Zoom administrator, you know, Zoom czar throughout the pandemic. And I give Chris credit because we, I didn't ever, I don't even get to even heard of Zoom, and then within days, we were on it full-time. One of the things, it's kind of a next step, is, and I don't think anybody likes hearing the word hybrid model anymore because we've heard it a million times, but I do think that there's probably going to be, even after vaccines, some desire to have a combination of meeting in person and having the ability to zoom in or participate remotely. If, for no other reason that, we got, and I think, I was at the Mass, I was in and out of the virtual Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference, that was Thursday and Friday last week. And one of the things that, that I have seen since the very beginning, that people are seeing statewide, is participation is higher.
Yeah.
You get more people participating, and it's a way of engagement and participation that is, in some ways, better or more direct than in-person meetings. And so how do you get back to being in the same room and being with each other, but also providing that opportunity for participation? So I've already asked our CIO, Jason Bulger and Chris, to start thinking about what would that hybrid model look like? How would we need to outfit our meeting rooms to make sure people, because not everybody, as you know, you can't sit next to somebody with your laptop, there would be that awful feedback noise that you get when there's two microphones open on the same meeting. So how do we do that? So, great question, and just today, we started trying to figure that out for the future.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you very much for your town manager's report. I was, in fact, going to mention the caucus, but I'm glad you covered all of that. And just remind everybody that we have tried to mention the caucus date for the last two or three select board meetings, but it's helpful for people to hear the details. The other comment that I would make, and my comments are brief today just because of what we've got to get accomplished this evening, is the town manager's evaluation has been given to him, and that will be posted on the select board website tomorrow. And that concludes my remarks. This evening, we have two different agenda items which relate to the repositioning efforts that the Concord Housing Authority has made. I see Mary Ann Nelson, the executive director, is here this evening, and as well as Lane Partridge and Liz Russ, who have worked on two of the documents that were in our packet tonight. The first document is the Concord Housing Authority LLC pilot agreement, and I don't know, I can tell you that the Concord Housing Authority is one of the few nonprofits in town that has made a direct pilot contribution to the town for a number of years. And now that they're looking at repositioning their federal projects, they wanted to reach an agreement with the town about how this would be handled. So, Mary Ann, I don't know if you want to open with some additional comments, or whether Lane would like to comment on this agreement with the town?
Let me just, well, start my video, hold on.
Okay, Mary Ann's getting set up.
I'm getting, yeah, I'm getting situated. I was thinking I'd have to, anyway, can you, you can hear me though, right?
Yes, of course.
So, so what we're looking to do, the Housing Authority is looking to convert our 18 public housing units to a project-based Section 8, and both our state and federal public housing units receive tax relief through pilot. The formulas are a little different. Our state housing goes by bedroom size, and our federal public housing, it's a different formula. It is based on rents and a certain percentage of our rent. So what we're hoping to do is to continue that arrangement and that formula when we convert the units from public housing to Section 8 project-based.
Okay, thank you. And Lane, I know that you've been working with the Concord Housing Authority. Will this agreement be with the Concord Housing Authority LLC as opposed to with the Concord Housing Authority?
Yeah, it would have to be with the, the entity that actually is taking ownership of the properties, but, you know, it's nice that they want to continue that. We have worked out that they will, they are, will continue to be exempt, so it's a true pilot in the, in the essence that we don't tax them, so it's nice that they're willing to continue it.
Okay, good. And it's my understanding that the select board are the, is the entity that needs to approve this agreement, correct?
So the Concord Housing Authority Board approved the agreement, agreement at our last meeting, and now it is on to the select board, yes.
Okay. And Lane, your recommendation is to go forward with this, I assume?
Yeah, it would be nice to have it formally approved, sure.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from select board members? And I see Terry's hands up already.
Right. Um, okay, my question is, if we could back up and go over some basics for a few minutes, because I don't really have a background to understand exactly what's happening, like, what is, some of my questions are, what is the difference between CHA and CHA LLC? What is the difference between this pilot and the previous year's pilot? I understand we're converting to Section 8, but I'm not really understanding what this is all about.
Okay, thank you for those questions. Mary Ann, I think I'll ask you to begin with, and maybe Liz, if you need to as well, just talk about generally what the repositioning means. We'll start there, I think.
So for us, the repositioning really is just taking our federal public housing and converting them to project-based Section 8. They will still be funded by HUD, but just through a different means. We'll be getting them through vouchers as opposed to operating money and capital money. The Housing Authority has formed an LLC to take these properties because the Housing Authority can't own the properties and manage them. I, the second-party question, I'm sorry, Terry, was.
Okay, so we're repositioning, and we'll have vouchers. Why does that mean we need a different pilot? What's the difference between this pilot and the previous year's pilots?
Well, the difference is that these properties are now under an LLC as opposed to the Housing Authority, and the previous agreement was with the Housing Authority. And the previous agreement was with the housing authority and not with the LLC. So that's what we have to, and actually, we should have a new agreement anyway, because this agreement has been in an effect for years, yet I can't put my hands on it. I don't think anyone can put their hands on it. So I think it's good to have this agreement drawn up.
And what is the difference between the LLC and the regular CHA?
Well, the Concord Housing Authority is not a nonprofit. It's a government agency. The LLC is a nonprofit of sorts. And that, they have to hold the property.
Okay. And Mary Ann, was that part of the requirement with the reposition, part of the requir-
Part of the requirement of HUD is that go under an LLC?
Yep.
Yeah, and the, the pilot agreement is not a requirement of HUD, but it's something that, because we had this established, they wanted to continue that same arrangement.
Right, the pilot agreement is just between the housing authority and the town.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Um,
So what is the difference between this pilot and the previous year's pilots?
That, that the LLC, the new entity that now owns those units, is paying the taxes or the paying in lieu of taxes, let me say. As opposed to this, the Concord Housing Authority paying on behalf of federally owned units.
Right.
How about that?
Are there any other differences about like how much is paid or?
No, the formula remains the same. It's the same formula for the units that there were for the public housing units.
Okay, and um and we've heard Lane's recommendation. Uh, any other comments or questions from, yes, Jane?
I, I think that somewhere in behind um Terry's question, and I think it would be useful for anybody that's watching, is what, what was the impetus for this? Wh- why, why did this happen now?
Why the repositioning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a question about it, but why?
Just explain why, yeah. Mary Ann, you want to begin and then?
Yeah, I will. So HUD gave us the op, all, all housing authorities with less than 50 units, the opportunity to convert. Um, previously, it was only large housing authorities. They could do it through what they called a RAD conversion. So the problem is that um HUD can't keep pace with um the capital improvements that are needed. And particularly in our situation, we have scattered site family units, which are very expensive. Um, the operating money, the rents, and the capital money is about one-third of what we will receive by converting them to project-based section eight. And the reason for that is that the um, uh, the fair market rents in Concord are so high that we're able to get a lot more money per unit if we, if we project base them. So we'll have more money to make capital improvements. It will, it's, it's kind of a win all around. Um, the units will be in better condition. They're older units. Some of them really need some attention.
And Mary Ann, will these still be on, I, I know the answer, but will these still be on the um affordability, uh, SHI affordability list?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
They will.
Um, Susan?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question, Mary Ann. So the, the funding will be greater under this new arrangement. And I assume that there's a lot of deferred maintenance on these units because the funding wasn't available?
Well, there are, I mean, we've been able to keep up with them. I mean, the important things, you know, roofs and boilers and that kind of thing, but um, there's sma- more, most of these units, um, we acquired from the town and back in the early eighties. And HUD gave us some money to buy the units and renovate the units, but it, and we keep up with them when, when units, when tenants move out, units are vacated, we go in and we do some renovations, but um for some of them. So we only get $53,000 a year for capital for 18 units. And when you have 11 really old units, it's, it's hard to keep up. So this is um, this will be a good, a good thing.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Mary Ann, will there still be local um preference attached to these units?
I hope so. I think that's our next agenda item is to talk about our, the um affordable housing restriction, but um it, yes. Um, I think that's our intent is to keep a local preference on these units.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, I would entertain a motion. Susan, you're on mute.
Sorry. Move that the select board uh sign the agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for uh 18 affordable units in Concord. Second.
Okay, the pilot agreement, yeah.
Mm-hmm. The pilot agreement, yes.
All right, um, will the clerk please call the roll? I heard a second.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgkins?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Oh, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Um, so thank you, uh, Lane, for working with the Concord Housing Authority and their new unit now, CHALLCC to um get this wrapped up. Thank you very much. Um, the next piece of the, the repositioning that we're asked to consider this evening is protection of the affordability status for the CHA repositioned properties. And um again, Mary Ann, I don't know if you want to make an introductory comment, but Liz Russ is here and I think will help us walk us through this as well.
Yeah, I think Liz is probably better, uh, probably be better for Liz to talk about it. I apologize, I can't get my camera on, otherwise I would be on. Um, I think Lyn- Liz would be better to, to talk about this and then I can chime in.
Okay, great. So welcome, Liz, and thank you.
Yes, hi, everybody. Um, I'm Liz Russ, the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office, and I've been working with Mary Ann and her team um, on this repositioning since they started. Um, and uh, so the, there's a a memo in your package, and it really just starts with a little bit of background, which I think Mary Ann's already provided. These, this relates to 18 units across nine properties. Um, and it's really an exciting, I don't know if exciting, but a good, a good project for the housing authority um, as well as for HUD. HUD is getting wants out of the business of owning the properties and really just in the funding. And that really makes sense to have the local authority owning the properties and, and doing all that work. And it comes with more funds available to provide the preservation and the uh, the capital improvements that are needed. We had assumed going into the project that, that HUD would be also providing an affordable housing restriction as part of the conveyance process. And it was just recently when we learned that that was not the case. Um, and what HUD would be providing is uh what they call their, their HAP contract, which their housing assistant payment contract. And this is a 20-year commitment from HUD about their funding, the affordability level uh limits and the, the tenancy and all those kinds of details that are often found in that affordable housing restriction. Though it's not a property restriction by the legal sense of the word, but it's enough of a restriction to uh keep the units on the subsidized housing inventory and to provide all the details and to commit the funding between HUD and the housing authority. It's a 20-year contract, um, and it's um, you know, it's sufficient, and it's the standard section eight kind of a contract that HUD uses. And I think, um, you know, in, I'm gonna say in stable political times, there would be, um, you know, in the past, people have had no concerns and they have the HUD contract, and when the 20 years are up, HUD just renews the contract and then they go on for another 20 years. And as we were talking about it, I thought it was important to bring to your um, your attention and discussion um, whether you would want to include also a sep- in addition to the HAP contract, a separate affordable housing restriction to preserve the affordability in the future, um, should HUD not renew the contract in 20 years. You know, we just don't know what uh, what might happen. 20 years might be a long time. Who knows what happens with HUD and funding? And um, so it's an option for you to consider. So it's not the current situation, um, but we do say here that, you know, the HUD funding availability may change in the distant future. And the affordable housing, a separate and additional affordable housing restriction would continue and require the use of the properties as affordable housing irrespective of the HAP contract. Um, so if, if you didn't have that and the HAP contract expired and HUD did not renew it, uh, the housing authority would be, would be under no obligation to retain the properties for affordable housing. So that would be the downside. Now, you know, is that likely? Probably not. And the housing authority is very um committed to affordable housing. Um, but this is just giving you the option of legal protection. I do know a situation in uh North Reading where the, this happened and there was no protection and the housing authority did sell off their unit for market rate um as they were able to do. And the town wa- you know, would have made a different choice, but they, they didn't have that ability at the time. So not to say that that's, that would happen here at all, but it is possible, that's all. Um, so again, this is a speculative scenario, and there's no reason to assume that HUD wouldn't renew the contract or that, that should they not renew it, that the housing authority would dispose of the properties in any other way. So it's a it's, you just don't know what's gonna happen in 20 years. And uh, I thought it was my responsibility to bring that to the board for your consideration um to do an affordable housing restriction. These are pretty standard forms. And we certainly have templates and drafts that we would uh present and review with a town council, and it would be um, also provided by the uh housing authority, uh, legal people that they're working with. Um, so it would be some additional effort because there would probably have to be one for each of the properties and, and, and so forth, but it, it wouldn't be a giant project under no way. Um, and the local restriction would be held by the town and would be written to the DHCD standard, so it would align, you know, should it be needed to, to be sprung into action, if you will, in a 20 years hence. Um, so that's the item. It's a little, it's a little complicated. Um, to, was a little complicated for me. Uh, it took a couple of months to sort it out. Um, but uh, I hope I explained it so that, that you can um understand the choice in, in front of you.
Thank you, Liz. Um, so questions from the board? Ma'am?
So I think, you know, I, I haven't had a chance to look at that Reading case, but I'm just really curious, given that the mission of the housing authority is to provide housing for, you know, folks that can't norm, afford normal rate units. So even if they sold off the unit for market rate, maybe that was because it gave them the opportunity to do other things to benefit their, you know, base. And so I'm, I just wonder, I mean, you're looking at the downside of, of the, the risk to, of the, this thing terminating and there not being an agreement. But I look at the risks of kind of tying the hands of the housing authority going forward and, and, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. And this is a 20-year agreement. It, I mean, it seems like we 18 years from now could come forward and establish that restriction, right? We, there's no time limit on us setting that in.
Of course.
So I, I don't see, I mean, since we got the, it on the SHI, these units are on the SHI, we've got a 20-year commitment. We don't know what's gonna happen. Why lock it down when maybe there are other eventualities that could happen and might be better?
Elaine, do you want to comment?
Thank you. Um, I just want to point out that all affordable housing in Concord has a deed rider on it. Um, it, that's how I recognize that it's an affordable unit, is that it has a deed rider. Um, and even with that, so I was reminded today, I was talking to a property owner on Stowe Street. And uh, even with deed riders, some of the old ones, the language was not good enough, and we actually lost an affordable unit to a market sale because of uh an issue with how that rider was written. They, they've changed that now. They're, they're all very good. But every affordable unit in Concord has a deed rider similar to what's being presented.
So Elaine, you raise a um, a, a point that um sparks a, a question I've had, and that is, um, is it possible to have um restrictions on the land so that the Concord Housing Authority, a- as affordable on the land? Uh, so that the Concord uh, uh Housing Authority's hands wouldn't be tied if they wanted to put up a new structure because the o- old structure really needed to be modernized to meet all of the um, clean energy and other uh goals that we have in town as well as?
Of course, yes, of course. Um, most of the restrictions run with the land, not the structures.
Okay.
And I, I just wanted to mention that the case in North Reading, I mean, the housing authority needed the money. That's why they sold those. They had some, they had deferred maintenance on other properties, and this was a way for them to fund it. It, you know, it was a, it made perfect business sense for them, but the restriction didn't run with the land. So it might not happen, but just to clarify that particular situation.
Yeah, and so then you think of, well, what would be the alternative if they weren't able to sell the unit, you know? It, it might not have been good for the population that was served by the housing authority. I just, I just look at this and, you know, well, maybe yes, for a private owner, your run unit, it'd be one thing. But this is controlled by the housing authority, whose mission is to provide affordable housing. So I, I just don't have that sense of that we're taking a risk here um as it stands.
Other comments or questions from board members? Okay. Um, Mary Ann, um, did your board have a recommendation on this or a d- direction?
No, uh, they did, they reviewed it. They really didn't comment on it. I think um, our biggest concern is always local preference, making sure that um these remain uh with local preference. And as long, I, I don't think you know, it, it matters too much to us. I mean, I can't admit, and it's such, such an unlikely scenario that HUD would pull back. But I mean, I suppose, you know, you could say that maybe they could. I, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay. Um, Liz, is, is there any conflict with the furthering fair housing and, and the retention of local preference on the, on these units?
Um, the LIP program would not allow for local preference, but a local restriction, you could build in the local preference. Um, but it is, it is something that's always um, uh, different, different programs have different requirements. I'll just say it like that, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, so it's not, you know, based on the information that was given to us, the HAP restriction is already will already exist.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so are, are, do we need board confirmation that that is, if that is in fact the, the will of the board? Do we need board confirmation uh for that?
Um, I think that the, the housing authority attorney on the transaction wanted confirmation from the town that um the HAP contract was sufficient and that a separate affordable housing restriction was not required.
Yeah. All right, um, and it, it, I think-
Just one other question, which is what have other peer towns done who have had this kind of re-characterization?
Um, well, that we're one of the only towns that is doing this, we're a small housing authority. Some of the larger towns are, but I think we're further ahead in the process than any other town, so I, I don't have any answer on that.
Um, many other, or the only other projects I know that went through something like this, um, also had uh, public funds that were being used in addition, and those came with restrictions. So this is really just a little bit different in that it's just the contract. There's no other development subsidies. So this is really just a little bit different in that it's just the contract. There's no other development subsidies coming in.
Thanks.
It sounds to me like the town town's interest is protected here in terms of the affordability of these 18 units and that the Concord Housing Authority and that there will at least through HAP for the next 20 years. And that I think that it sounds like the Concord Housing Authority has demonstrated their continued interest in a partnership with the town in terms of the pilot agreement. So I guess I and hearing no contradictions. I I'm in favor of just supporting the HAP status of affordability on on these repositioned units. So I I think I don't see any other comments, so I will ask for a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Wait, do we need a motion? I mean, we would not take action.
We could also go that route, but it sounded like the attorney for the LLC was looking for some kind of affirmation of our position on this. Did I understand that correctly, Mary Ann?
I think, Liz, you have spoken with Kurt more on this subject than I have. So is that what he's asking?
He wanted confirmation that the town was not going to require a separate affordable housing restriction. I don't, I I think just reporting back and then referring to the minutes once those are available, which will show the conversation is probably sufficient.
Okay.
Okay. So I think there's general consensus then that the HAP status will be sufficient to confirm the town's interest in the continued affordability of these units.
Yep. Put a tickler in the calendar for 2038 at a select board meeting to check this up again.
Well, it'll it'll show on the the subsidized housing inventory report with an expiration date. So that that will be the trigger. So there'll be a formal trigger for that.
You're joking, Matt?
Of course.
No, you're partly joking, but I can say that I did speak to the Select Board Office last year about starting 100 year tickler calendar because we already had 225. We had
99 year leases.
Yeah, and we had all kinds of things out. So it's interesting that you bring that up yet again. That's good. All right. So thank you, Elaine. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Mary Ann. And I know I I know this has been a lot of work for you and the board and everyone else who has been working with you on this. So good luck with completing this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Select Board submission for 2020 annual report. Thank you, Susan, for taking this on this year. And are there any last typos or something that somebody noticed that weren't caught by any chance? Okay.
Could I could I send Susan something offline? Because I did read through and I did note some things. And unfortunately, I didn't highlight them here or my highlights didn't work preserved.
So this is due like now, right?
Okay.
And
Sorry, let me see if I can find the highlighted version.
Okay.
Technically due, if I could just interrupt real quick, it's technically due on Friday. I'm going to send it to Aaron after this meeting, but if there are last minute things, I can hold off till tomorrow or I mean, it's for that board, obviously, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Because I think, you know, the Select Board would want to know that.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing is, here we go. I've got it. Yeah. Yeah. So it was in the very first paragraph. It says the board appoints the town manager and works closely with the incumbent to set annual goals. I don't think the incumbent that I, at least I didn't really understand. I guess that's meant the town manager.
Yes.
Okay, it's just not a phrasing that I'm familiar with.
I think it was probably to avoid two town managers in one sentence.
Yeah, or him.
Just put him. I agree with Matt.
And then I think that we also say it acts as the authority for granting numerous licenses and reviews the development of the operating and capital budgets. But I mean, do we need the development of it's we review the operating capital budgets, I guess?
That sounds that sounds fine.
Okay. I guess those were the only ones that just stuck out for me. I just, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Terry.
I've had a couple of very minor things that I sent in. Susan, did you get them or Linda?
I didn't.
Yeah, I saw two. I saw two typos. Thank you.
Okay, so you have them.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for doing this, Susan. Good job.
Yeah.
You're welcome. So Linda, you're going to send those to Jeremy and he'll make those corrections. Is that correct?
Um. If you send them to me. Terry, why don't you mention so Susan can take care of this right now?
Okay, well, I got to find them then.
Well, one was referring to the Junction Village Christopher Heights units. It said 85. There was 83.
Okay.
And the second one, I'm not remembering off the top of my head, Terry, sorry.
It's just another typo like that. Can I just forward it to Susan and Jeremy?
That's fine. Yeah, it was a very, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I just want to, so Jeremy, you got these, the other two that Matt mentioned. So what did we decide on incumbent? Is that going to change to him or to just stay incumbent?
I would. Him.
Read right to me even.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
It clarifies that there's not another town manager waiting in the wing, so I'm comfortable with that change.
Okay, so there are those two. And then Terry's going to forward the other one. And then Jeremy, I'll loop with you to see the version before it goes off finally.
That's good.
Okay, thanks to the committee for all your comments. I see your hand is up, Mr. Reed, and you normally we like to take public comment at the end, but I'll let you speak now. Is it specifically for your comments for this report?
It is for the annual town report, yes.
Okay. You'll state your name and your address, please.
My name is Brooks Reed. I live at 366 Estorbrook Road. And under the notable issues, there's a statement about litigation, which has been initiated by the town, that is, the Estorbrook and Nagalk lawsuits. The statement fails to mention that both of these actions were initiated by the town. I think that's an important thing to mention. So there's no public confusion on this point. Also, the reference to the Estorbrook litigation refers to, quote, the Estorbrook Woods Trail. This term has never been used in the town's court filings and seems designed to confuse the public about the matter. The town's attorneys refer to the area of contention as, quote, the discontinued Estorbrook Road. Use of any other term would appear to be an effort to confuse the public on this matter. And finally, at the end of the paragraph, referring to the Estorbrook Woods issue, quote unquote, mistakes litigation, the litigation is only about the discontinued Estorbrook Trail. It's not about the Estorbrook Woods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to do this task was delegated to Susan, and I'll ask you to take those comments under consideration.
I will. Thank you. Thank you, Brooks.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from select board members before we leave this?
I found the other typo and I it's just, it's June and I wrote June 2021. Because it's a 2020 report, I didn't want to confuse. I I sent it over.
Oh, about the trial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all it was.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay. I think we are now ready for a select board town staff appointments.
There is a nomination, actually, Linda, that I I want to read that I got from Jeremy. It's nominate Joseph Rogers of 20 Tracy Street to the Agriculture Committee as an associate member for a term to expire April 30, 2022.
Um, I was on the, sorry, Susan, I was on the previous agenda item, which is the Select Board Town Staff Appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Move to appoint Town Accountant Mary Barrett for a term retroactively beginning June 1, 2020 and set to expire May 31, 2023. Move to approve. Oh, should we do that one separately or all of them together?
That's fine. We can do it separately. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and it's unanimous in the chair, so declares. And so
Recuse myself for the next item.
We have a second part here that you
You're further down.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Select Board Confirmation of Town Manager Staff Appointments.
Move to approve the town manager appointments of Town Clerk Kari Tari, Chief Financial Officer Carrie LaFleur, and Assistant Town Accountant Erin Mulcahy for terms retroactively beginning June 1, 2020 and set to expire May 31, 2021.
Okay, second. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates.
Hey, that's unanimous. Chair, so declares.
Linda?
Yeah.
Can we just add in the record that the board thanks those individuals for the for serving the town well. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, that's very appropriate. Thank you very much. Again.
Now I'm going to disappear.
Not yet, Matt. There's a nomination.
Okay, there was none on the agenda.
No, it came in. It was a late breaking news, but
Okay, sorry.
It was cleared through the appropriate parties, so. Nomination is for Joseph Rogers of 20 Tracy Street to the Agricultural Committee as an associate member for a term to expire April 30, 2022. So that's
Oh.
We don't need to.
Okay.
Okay, committee reappointments.
All right, now I'm reducing myself.
Okay.
Finally, right? Okay.
To appoint.
Looking forward to it.
Move to appoint Kate Yoder of 79 Deer Grass Lane and Margot Kimball of 21 Winthrop Street to the West Concord Cultural District Committee for terms to expire on April 30, 2023.
Okay, second. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Whoops.
Oh, forget it. Sorry. And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. So that was four in favor and one abstention. Okay, and the chair so declares. We'll move on to, and thank you for everyone who stepped up for our new committees or to be reappointed. Will the move on to the committee liaison reports? And we'll keep them as tight as we can this evening.
I'll jump in, just to say that I just had one meeting, which is the Community Preservation Committee. They voted their recommendations. I think we've discussed those recommended amounts in the past. The only, I think, you know, just was to confirm that the CHDC's buy down fund is 233,000 was the final allocation. So all the funds are being allocated for this year. So that's the main news from that meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Susan?
I just have two meetings to report on. One was the Economic Vitality Committee and Marsha was there and announced that there's a common block grant micro enterprise wave of funding in which the applicant can include their 2020 tax return if they were rejected based on their 2019 tax return, which sounds reasonable. And they need to be in business from October 2019 onward. There's also new PPP funds available that can be applied for through through the banks. Patriots say is going to the events Lexington and National Park has already announced they're going to have virtual events and as the we expect to, but there'll be more coming forward on that.
And I just jump in and say that we're investigating how to work with Lexington and Arlington in a joint virtual event. It's still be worked out.
Great. And then there was further discussion on outdoor dining. Once the weather gets warmer and how long will it extend? And that's a conversation that will continue. The other meeting was Personnel Board and they're trying to figure out the they have two things they're they want to study in parallel. One is the bylaw structure and the other is assess whether or not to present articles, what was Article Six that was withheld at last year's town meeting again? Admin or what to do with it. So that took pretty much the entire meeting about what the role of Personnel Board would be. And this discussion is going to continue. I think it's tomorrow is the next meeting. So tune in if you're interested in that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Jane?
I've got a couple of these. I'll start with the CSEC meeting, meeting, which last week, last Wednesday afternoon and I with special highlight to the ASHP Awareness Quality Control Program presentation by Janice Setti of our light plant with Christopher Haringa from Abode and some heating coaches. This is give me a really great opportunity that we're we're embarking on here. And I will share with well, I would suggest anybody go on to the CMLP website and familiarize themselves with this. But our opportunity with with our light plant to and run, you know, in partnership with CSEC to have some of these heating coaches assist Concord residents in looking at their at their own situations is one more way that not only are we encouraging and creating significant green energy and emissions caps as a town, but we're also implementing and helping everybody in the town learn how to do it and also taking advantage of any and all state grant funds to do that. And I thought that this was a really impressive presentation. It was a long meeting, but I won't go into that now. And I unfortunately, I missed most of the NRC meeting, so I will skip that because I was at the Board of Health's meeting and I noticed I noted that Stephen, you described a lot of the the pieces and I think Terry brought up several, but the again, you know, we are very, very, very lucky in Concord to have the kind of professional staff that we do have in our Department of Health and in our Board of Health. And it's just, it's it really, it's awe inspiring when when this incredibly important system to all of us in COVID is challenged the way they are. They had a long conversation with Concord resident Stuart Sinclair Weeks about his concerns and continued unhappiness with the state and federal mask and other guidelines under COVID. His father is a resident of Newbury Court and they feel very estranged from one another and that's he is, he's discussing litigation. I suspect he will make his his views known, but I hope that that will be refrained from. It would not be against the town. It would be at a larger venue. And I thought that their patience and their their respect for his position was And I thought that their patience and their, their respect for his position was really quite impressive. I think another, another board might not have been as as active listeners as they were. On the COVID nineteen update, the only thing I would add to what I heard was that while volunteers of general interest are not needed, they are looking for skilled nurses and skilled administrators of vaccines. So again, you need to be licensed, as Stephen was describing. But they do need medical professionals joining their ranks, especially as we go into a wider distribution. And I also just wanted to say, I tip my hat to Fire Chief Tom Judge and the entire team that's put together this, this site on the, at the high school. If anybody hasn't seen it, it's worth going looking at it, because it's, it's amazing what they've done and how quickly they've done it and how well. So maybe that's also because we don't have a lot of student parking at the high school right now, but I'm sure that will change in the, in the future. And the other board I wanted to acknowledge was the Agricultural Commitment Committee, which Terry, I hope all is well, and I haven't, I haven't had a chance to pass back on that. But the Ag Committee had a wonderful meeting. I enjoyed it immensely. They had, it's a great group of farmers and agricultural, agriculturally focused individuals in town. And one of the things that they focused on was the Spring Forum, which I really hadn't thought about, but it will be at Walden Woods, and they're going to be displaying and learning about large different forms of farm equipment. And I, for one, am going to make sure that in April I put it on my calendar, because, among other things, I learned about carrot, what is it, a flamethrower to, to protect carrot crops. Who knew? Who knew that carrots were so vulnerable to weeds? But as a way of minimizing labor, there is a, you use a flamethrower, the key piece is that you can, you have to pick that perfect moment right before the carrot leaves pop up, but once the weeds have shown. And you literally use this device to to get rid of the weeds and let the carrots flourish. So I learned something.
If that, if that isn't inducement for our community members to join our volunteers for interesting tidbits, I don't know.
Absolutely. I, I loved it. So Terry, I'm sorry for your, your family needs, but I, lucky me, I got to go to that meeting.
Oh, thank you so much for covering that meeting, Jane. That's great. So, so that, if you're all set, that's a good segue for me. I was just going to say there will be a spring forum, but I really didn't know any details, so thanks a lot. That's great.
Thank you for your report. Go ahead, Terry.
Yes. I was able to go to a few meetings. One was a Concord meeting where they discussed the library sustainability plan. The chair is Elise Woodward, and the goals are to create an implementable five-year sustainability plan at the library that aligns with the town's plan and the library's long-term plan. So that was a good meeting. And then a couple of days ago, the West Concord Junction Cultural District held a meeting. They are going for a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant. I think from the State Cultural Council to do a comprehensive map that will tie the whole district together. These maps will be available and hopefully available at all the establishments and a kiosk at the rail trail. Maybe put on a stand there and branded with their new logo. Also, two videos were made of the wonderful five-and-ten tribute to Maynard Forbes and the hundreds of people that were there. So I believe these two videos are now posted on the town website, under the West Concord Junction Cultural District. And I haven't seen them, but they're supposed to be really excellent to see all that great community support that came out for the five-and-ten. And then, Linda, you might be talking about this anyway, but I did attend the Finance Committee meeting a few days ago, and there were a couple of interesting things there. They voted the guideline for, for the upcoming budget, and also they had an excellent presentation from the middle school building committee folks. And I'm hoping that we can get a similar presentation and Q and A at our select, upcoming select board meeting. That's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay, does that, I think, leaves me? Okay, I attended the Concord Housing Development Corporation meeting. They talked about many of the housing projects that are currently going on in town, but a particular note, I think, for us is that there are several projects for which they're looking to the future. Emerson Annex, there's going to be, forthcoming will be an Emerson Annex buy-down opportunity to keep it affordable. The, the Main Street property, there are three lots that were selected for affordable housing and written into the final approval for that agreement. They would need to, one of the lots could handle a duplex, and the recommendation from the CHCD was that we should be looking ahead for funding, possibly for some of that, an opportunity there, and that there may be other ways to supplement that and leverage that opportunity for affordable housing. And then the, so I think those are at least two projects that we're mentioning, and as we know, like our other building projects in town, you need to think ahead and then already be planning for setting aside some funds that will work towards those goals. I met with the Tax Fairness Committee. They were discussing what their options were next, since the home rule petition was not approved in twenty-twenty. And so that was the main topic there. They also explored an interim, we're going to explore an interim strategy for funding the number of, I think it's somewhere close to forty individuals who are receiving some assistance from that program, how they might be able to do that if there was a gap in terms of the home rule petition getting approved. Terry's already mentioned, I was at the FinCom meeting. They did set a guideline of two-point-two-nine percent. And also tried to, at least at this point, decrease what that tax impact would be on, on the committee. All of these are preliminary guidelines, however, of course. I attended the Hatts Area Towns Committee, and the guest was Representative Livingston, who represents Bedford and some other communities. What was interesting, however, in his conversation is that when asked about was the legislature already thinking about a hybrid mode for Zoom meetings? He admitted that, to the best of his knowledge, they weren't even entertaining that thought at this point. So some strong statements were made about the effectiveness of that, considering that model, and how participation had increased and so forth, some of the comments that were made earlier. So that was interesting from that particular conversation. Well, I also attended the Finance Audit Advisory Committee, and we're hoping, and they have, we saw the near-final rendition of the twenty-twenty audit for the town, and that was to be completed within days after we met, and so we have some additional, one more meeting we have on that, and then shortly thereafter, we want to bring that same presentation to the select board. And so that concludes the meetings I've recently attended, the formal meetings I've recently attended. Okay. Miscellaneous correspondence. I did receive some correspondence regarding the, some with safety concerns for the multiple uses of Junction Park and asking the town to take, and this luck board to be mindful of some issues there. And that is the extent of the recent correspondence that I've received. Public comments? Are there any? Diane? Oh, yeah, there you go. I hope so.
There you go. Sorry, it was a little tricky. I, this is, I'm the observer.
I'm sorry, your, your name and address again?
Proctor fifty-seven Sudbury Road. I'm trying to say that I'm the official observer from Legal and Voters. This is me as a citizen. Asking a question. I'm a little confused about the extension of the three people that Stephen has has exercised to just May of twenty-twenty-one, those contracts. Is this, is this normal? I mean, that's, let's see, we're in Jan, January, February, March, April. I mean, that's just a five-month extension of a contract. Aren't these usually longer contracts? I just want some, lots of people have written me about it. I just want some clarification, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Linda, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so it's not really a contract. It's, it's, it's an appointment, and it really is a ministerial act. That, you know, they're, the town, the town manager is the appointing authority, so in terms of recruiting, hiring the, the individuals that are in those positions, that is all done, their employees, and they're, as you noted, they're great employees.
Yeah.
But under the charter, there is appointment for certain positions. And so it is the, like I said, the ministerial act of appointment, but it's not the actual hiring or contractual obligation, so it's just a ceremonial thing.
Thank you for that clarification. For those of us who don't know all of that detail, that's really helpful. Thank you. I also just.
I had, Diane, I had, I had to ask as well. So, yeah, I had to ask as well.
Thank you for that gracious comment on your part. I also, I just want to thank the, the board for making available the, the materials that we received this time in writing about the legal costs and other costs, because those of us who try to take notes during these meetings to report oftentimes have found some of the oral reports difficult to get all the details down, but to have those written reports was an enormous help. And so I just want to thank anybody. Terry, I gather you were helpful in getting some of these done. But for, for the, to the degree that that's been done, it's really helpful for those of us trying to keep track of things and support the good work you're doing. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Diane. Okay. Terry, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just want to go back to miscellaneous correspondence for half a minute. That letter you are referring to about Junction Park, and I think we also got another letter about having to do with Bedford paving their section of the reformatory trail, and I'm hoping that these types of issues can be looked at carefully by the Transportation Advisory Committee, and that they can then come at some point to the select board with some overall plan for some of these issues.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All right, I'm going, are there any other public comments? Seeing none. We are now going to adjourn to an executive session with respect to collective bargaining for Concord Public Works Highway and Grounds. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the chair so declares not to return to open sessions. So I would entertain a motion to that effect?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Can I just ask a question? Isn't it required that Susan, that the clerk reread the?
That we, we, yeah, we usually do that.
All right, I can do that. Move to adjourn to executive session with respect to collective bargaining for Concord Public Works and Highway, Works Highway and Grounds. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the chair so declares. And the meeting will, open meeting will not resume after that.
Not to return to open session. Thank you.
Not to return to open session.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, so let's recall the roll, please.
We have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, everyone. So we will resume in an executive session. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.